Hello everyone, everyone welcome to your office today. My name is Ali and I am from Excel Academy. Today we have Miss Carol and she will be sharing important changes in 1955 and also today will be the Q and A session. If you have any question, if you have any question regarding to this topic, do leave your message in the comment section down below. And Miss Carol will answer them right after her presentation. Okay, I pass this mic to Miss Carol.
Good afternoon, everyone. Nice to see you again. Oh, I can't see you all. At least I can get your questions. So we've had our Employment Act Amendment briefing or webinar on the 25th of August. And we had several questions which we have answered. Moving on, we had a lot more questions coming in. That is why we scheduled today another session just to ask those questions. And answer those questions. And then if you have any more questions, we are here until 1pm, you can still forward your questions. So I hope to answer all of it. So if you need any more clarifications, please do ask as well. Alright? So let me, just give me a few moments, let me go to the slides. Just a moment is loading. Right, can see? Alright, okay. So today we are talking about the Amendment to Employment Act. Which is called Employment Amendment Act 2022. So there's good news for human resource personnel and employers. Because the amendment has been postponed to 1st January 2023. So initially it's supposed to be from today. So now it has been postponed. So we still have another four months to understand what this act is all about, what are the amendments? And take the necessary actions, alright? So it's good news for us, but some employees of course not happy, but it's just a few months, okay? So nothing to worry about that. Alright, let's move on to the questions. So let me skip some of the slides that we've already shown you earlier. Okay, so this is one of the questions. Which employee covered under the Employment Act 1955? So as at 1st January 2023, all employees will be covered, alright? So currently only those who are earning 2000 and below salary are covered under the Employment Act. Those who are earning 2001 ringgit and above, they are only covered under the Contracts Act. Meaning whatever appointment letter or offer letter or contract letter that they receive, that is the binding for them, okay? If there's any dispute, any queries, any terms and conditions all should be stated in the individual letter to them. Okay, that's all. But now moving forward, it's no limit, okay? There's no limit to the who's covered, no limit to salary or any wages covered. So everyone is covered. But the exception is only those who are earning 4000 and below are able to claim for overtime. This one, you can see the slides here. So the exception is only this, okay? So claim for overtime is only those who are earning 4000 and below. And then termination or layoff benefits, which is actually a retransment benefit, only they can claim, okay? So other than that, all other terms and conditions, regulations in the Employment Act all are covered for all employees. Okay, right to the top level. So the meaning of employee is, okay, let's, let me go to another slide quickly. So the meaning of employee is those who are given contract of service. Alright, whoever you employ to work in your company, alright? Here it states that whether oral or in writing or express or implied. Okay, meaning an individual hired by an employer or organizations to work any level, okay? Manager level, CEO, CFO, driver, clerk, any level, okay? As long as you give them a employment contract, then they are covered under this act, okay? So it's a wider coverage now, so all employers need to take note. Because a lot of rules and regulations in the Employment Act previously may not be followed. So now you need to follow that for all the employees. So what it means is you need to look into your contract letters that you've given to them. So make sure that they comply with all the regulations except for the overtime and retransment benefit. Alright? So remember this one, I checked, so scope of the act, okay, this is the one. Sorry, I'm going fast. Hope you can catch up. Alright, so let's go to the next one, next question here. How this impact to the freelancer job? This is another question, okay? So freelancer job would be a gig worker, we call it now, in the terms gig or freelance. Meaning as and when you request, require that person, only then they come and work for you. Okay, let's say maybe you need them for two days in a week, nine to five, then they come and work for you. So they could be construed as freelance worker. So this one is up to the company how to hire them. Again, I go back to the contract of service. Okay, contract of service. If you give them a contract of service similar to your other employees that work for you five days a week. Let's say your company open five days a week, they work for you five days a week, then you've given them a contract of service. So if a freelancer, you also give contract of service, then they are also employee. Then you need to fulfill all the requirements in the Employment Act. Okay, so if you don't want to do that, there's another way is you give contract for service. Okay, contract for service are someone you apply, you don't employ, you engage them to provide you a service. The simple example is like a cleaner. Usually most officers or companies have a cleaner coming in. They will have a contract for service with a cleaning company to say that, okay, cleaner comes in two hours per day to clean my office. So the cleaner who comes in and works at your office for two hours every day, they are not your employee. Okay, so meaning you didn't give them contract for off service, you don't have to follow anything in the Employment Act for that cleaner. Because you sign a contract for service with the company. Okay, so that's the difference. So coming back to freelance job, you can do the same. You can say, okay, I hire you on a project basis, I just need you to do certain jobs. And then I'm giving you a contract for service. So meaning he's a, like a consultant or you hire them as a service provider, that's it. Okay, example like a renovation service that you provide, that you have in your company, similar to that, okay? So that can be arranged with a freelance job. So it's up to the company to decide which one you want to give. Contract of service or contract for service? Okay, alright, let's move on to another questions. Let me skip to the question part. Okay, this is another question. Definition for manual labor, what consider as wages? Okay, previously they have a defined manual labor in the Employment Act, okay? But from 1st January 2023, it doesn't matter anymore because any employee all are covered, alright? But it will matter for those who are earning 4000 and above for overtime calculation purpose, okay? So manual labor definition would be someone who is doing example in a warehouse. You need to load and unload boxes from a truck. Okay, let's say you unload the boxes from a truck and then you load them onto a shelf in the warehouse. So that is manual labor, meaning you are doing it manually. So that's the definition. So those who are, you are paying 4000 and above and they are still doing manual labor or supervising someone doing manual labor will be entitled for the overtime. Okay, so other examples of manual labor will be a driver, fork lift driver, truck driver or even your boss's driver, MD's personal driver. Driving any vehicle is considered a manual labor. Alright, because they manually need to do something. Alright, so these are the simple definitions provided in the Employment Act. There's not much elaboration. But for example, if you're talking about supervising manual labors, that let's say you're loading something onto the truck or the shelf, there's somebody need to monitor that, supervise that, okay? Whether they are doing it correctly, whether the correct amount of boxes were loaded. So those supervisor, you need to see how, what is the percentage of manual labor supervision they do? Okay, depends. Maybe they do, just do 10%, 90% of their job is maybe on the computer. Then it's not considered manual labor anymore. So you need to determine how many percentage of manual labor they actually do. Alright, so up to the discretion of the company. If you're not too sure, you need to analyze the job scope further. Alright, hope I answered these questions on this. And talking about wages, what is the definition of wages? Wages is any salary and any fixed allowances you pay to the employee every month. Okay, every month, whatever fixed allowances minus anything to do with traveling or transportation. Okay, so this would be helpful for calculation of overtime, is the similar overtime and also a retransment benefit. Because you take wages, including all fixed allowances could be, you could be paying them maybe what kind of allowance, attendance allowance or it could be night shift allowance. So those are fixed allowances you pay every month, include them as wages. Okay, except traveling, transportation, anything to do with traveling like parking mileage to, all those exclude. Okay, it's similar to tax purpose, that tax also being exclude all these allowances. Because these allowances are considered to be used for work purpose. Alright, that is why it's excluded. The rest all are included, okay? Let's go to the next question. Okay, next question is how long into pregnancy before we are legally required to cover for maternity leave or maternity allowances? Okay, so let's go back to the slides that I shared, alright? So for pregnancy and maturity from 1st January 2023, it will be 98 days for all level of employees. It does, even now for 60 days is all level of employee, there's no restriction, right? Okay, so the length of service will follow this, this is all from the, this section. You can see the section below. So not less than 90 days during the nine months immediately before confinement. So let's say they are going to deliver on the 30th of September. Okay, so nine months they would have worked from, let's say, January to September, they should have worked not less than 90 days within that nine months. Next is before the 30th September, they should have employed anytime in the four months immediately before confinement. So even though they say 90 days within nine months, but the four months before that, they should be employed with the company. Why they have two different scenarios here is because some pregnant employees, they may resign and join another company. When they are pregnant, they can do that. So if they do that, then you need to calculate this way. Okay, how long do they, have they worked for your company? If they fulfill four months, then you need to pay them. Or here, if they fulfill 90 days, then you need to pay them. So that is why they give you two different scenarios. Alright, others are all the same. You need to have five surviving children, alright? The rest I've shared the last time. Okay? Next question. We are a body shop service provider, can the client refuse to pay for maternity leave? So I'm not too sure about this question because here the question ask client refuse to pay. So usually maternity leave, the employer need to pay, not the client. Alright, so whoever employed the employee, okay, as long as you fulfill these requirement, they are employee, then you need to pay them 60 days. So meaning they are going on leave for 60 days. The salary or wages due to them for the 60 days, you need to pay them. That's it, that's all. Okay, so go back to the contract of service. Who gave the employee the contract of service, under which company? So that company is responsible and liable to pay the two months or 60 days wages. Okay, so that answers that question. Let's go to other question. Another question here is this is a long one, okay? If our working hour is from Monday to Friday, 9am to 6:30, which comes to about eight and a half working hours per day, total of 42.5 hours per week. Do we need to pay OT to those 4K and below if they work extra another two and a half hours? Either Monday to Sunday in a week, still within 45 hours. Okay, let's answer the first question first, right? Okay, so the overtime calculation, of course, it starts after 45 hours, okay? So usually company will have a 45 hour now from 1st January 2023, we need to restrict to 45 hours per week of working hours, normal working hours. So you can vary Monday to Friday 9 to 6:30 or Friday 9 to 4:00 is fine. As long as the total for that week from Monday to Sundays, which is seven days, should limit to 45 hours, alright? In any case, if you, if you're working hours in this question is less than 45 hours, okay? I did work for one company, we work only five days a week, 9 to 6. Okay, so 9 to 6 is eight hours, minus lunchtime, eight hours, eight times four is only 40 hours per week. So we only work 48 hours per week, although the Employment Act says 48 hours. So there's eight hours of extra time we, we don't have to work, okay? So having said that, overtime will depend on what is your normal working hours. After your normal working hours is considered OT already. So don't go back to 45. So in my company, we work 40 hours, that's it. We don't calculate, oh, you need to work 48, but we didn't allow you to work 48. So now you, the extra eight hours, if you work, you cannot claim OT, cannot. Cannot do that because you already set your working hours as such. Alright, so after your normal working hours is considered overtime. Okay, so to counter this, you need to stretch your, ideally you need to stretch to 45 hours. But bear in mind, if you already given less working hours, 42.5, so now you're going to increase, you're going to have a lot of disagreement from your employees. Okay, unless they agree to it, then you stretch it to 45. Okay, if you, if not, there will be disagreement, then you can't stretch it, you just have to remain at 42.5. Okay, so whatever you're going to be doing which is less favorable to employee, of course there will be some disagreement. Right? Okay, so go to the next question. How to calculate overtime using 8.5 hours? Do we include traveling allowance, meal allowance, mobile allowance into wages? Right, let's go to the OT calculation method, okay? So this is the OT calculation, you see the yellow box there, this is the red, sorry, some of it ran. My, I just explained to you, okay, the words ran. So what you need to do is take the ORP, okay, which is ordinary rate of pay. Ordinary rate of pay is whatever wages you're paying them. So wages, as I mentioned, include everything except anything to do with transport or traveling allowance. Okay, all others fixed allowance that you pay on a monthly basis is considered as wages. Then you take the ordinary rate of pay, which is monthly rate of pay minus 26. Okay, the formula given in Employment Act is divide by, sorry, divide by 26. Then you times hourly rate of pay. Okay, then you get the figure, divide by normal hours of work. So normal hours of work is not given by the Employment Act. So for this question earlier, they are normal hours of work 8.5, so you need to divide by 8.5. If your normal hours of work is eight, like my case in my previous company, we work eight hours a day. So our calculation is divide by eight. Okay, so ORP divide by 26, you get the figure. So that figure you divide by eight or 8.5 or it could be 7.5. Alright, any number of hours you're working. So this is for monthly rated employee calculation. Okay, this figure I'm given. So daily rated employee will be a different type of calculation. But the formula would be the same, alright? So this is for overtime calculation for rest day or holiday. So same thing, you take the monthly rate of pay, how do you get? You get the ORP, ordinary rate of pay divide by 26. Then you get the figure, then you get times, this is the rate, if rest day, public holiday, this is the rate. Then you times how many days they worked. Okay, so this will be applicable from 1st January 2023 for those who are working for employee who are earning 4000 and below salary. Okay, let's go to another question here. So I've already answered this, OT calculation for below 4000. So those are the calculation rate. Thus the OT is kept to 4K and those above is no longer entitled for OT. Those who are earning 4000 and above are not entitled for overtime, okay, according to the Employment Act. But it's up to the company's discretion. I know most companies, they do pay some sort of compensation for the employees. Some don't pay, some pay. So it's up to the company, alright? But the Employment Act says is only up to 4000. Beyond that, you don't have to pay. Alright, so this is the calculation method. Go on to the next question. Leave entitlements termination of contract. Okay, so this person wanted to know about leave entitlement is the same, termination of contract is the same, no amendments, but I'm just sharing, no amendments, it's the same. Ah, leave, there's some amendment, sick leave. Okay, normal leave, no, no amendment, right? Only sick leave, there's amendment here. Which I've already shared the last time. Okay, so this is the normal leave that you need to provide employees. This is already stated in the Employment Act. Eight days per year if employed for less than two years, 12 days per year if employed for equals or more than two years or less than five years, 16 days per year if employed for equals two or more than five years. Okay, so if any of you, any of your company providing less than this, you need to revise it to make sure that you meet these requirements. So another question was the termination of contract. This one is already stated in the Employment Act. Okay, remember contract of service is the employee, right? So this is the minimum that you need to provide to them for termination of service. Either they resign or company terminates, this is the notice they need to give. Four weeks notice if the employee is employed for less than two years, six week notice if employed for over two years but less than five years, and eight weeks notice if employed for five years or more. Alright, so anything which is more than this is considered unfavorable to employee, you cannot put that in. Okay, I know some companies, they put three months notice for manager level, senior manager, they'll put, oh, you need to give three months notice. So three months will be 12 weeks. Okay, so now you can't do that anymore. So you need to come back down and revise all those notice period that you have given to meet all this. Right? Okay, there's another question about they were just asking flexible working arrangement, what is all about? Okay, so I'll just explain it again. Alright, flexible working arrangement, you can vary the hours of work, days of work and place. Place they work, meaning work from home, which is we are all too familiar now for the past two years, alright? So vary hours and days, but you must do meet the 45 hours per week. Okay, still bear that in mind. You cannot exceed, even though they asked to vary hours work, you cannot exceed the 45 hours of work. So vary hours could be maybe Monday they work eight hours and Tuesday they work six hours. Wednesday they work six hours again, could be, then total up, you can come up with 45 hours. Alright, days of work also, it can be what we call, you see here on the right hand side, compressed work week. Okay, so meaning if you're going to have 45 hours per week, you can put all the working hours into five days. Let's say they work five and a half days, now it become five days. So this one, employee is given the opportunity to write to employer to request for flexible work arrangement. So meaning what you, organization need to do is, all these guideline not given by Employment Act, this is what is given. So you need to be proactive, come out with a form. Okay, so similar to leave form, they apply leave form, right? Get approval. Similar to that, you need to come out with a form, request for them to apply what kind of variation they want. What kind of working arrangement? And then within 60 days, your supervisor or the management need to approve it. And then if it's rejected, you need to indicate grounds for refusal. So grounds for refusal, make sure that you have a solid reason. Okay, not frivolous reason, okay? Must be solid, otherwise you know, the employee can always think of this, employee can file a complaint at the uh, always think of this, uh, employee can file a complaint at the labor department, we don't want that. So now Employment Act is going to be, uh, on a wider coverage to all the employees, so a lot more employees will know about this and they will take the opportunity to highlight all this to the labor department, so you need to be extra careful. Previously, if those who are earning, uh, two thousand and above, they can't go to labor department. Right, they have to go to the civil court, you know, find a lawyer to find, uh, file a case. But now it's making, uh, the Employment Act is making it easier for them. Okay, so need to be wary of this. Alright, so that's on the flexible working arrangement. So on the box on the right, as I mentioned, these are some of the items mentioned by the HR minister, okay? So I put it down here, this is some of his suggestion. So depending on what is suitable for your organization, you can uh, put all this into the form for the employee to take and choose. Alright, let's go, what else, what other questions? Okay, so this one, I also want to mention, earlier we're talking about the termination of contract. Okay, term less favorable shall be what? Okay, so whoever covered under the Employment Act, you never follow the regulations. If let's say the regulations say you need to give eight days of uh, leave, but then the company gives six days, so six days is actually white. Okay, Employment Act overrides that, so it becomes eight days automatically, so that's what this section means, alright, it is white. So let's say there's now, we mentioned uh, termination or resignation notice, they need to give four weeks, but then company says six weeks. So the six weeks is white, okay, so you fall back to four weeks. Because the four weeks is more favorable to the employee, right, that's what it means here. Okay, let me see what other questions we have, let me just go down to just a minute. I think we've covered most of the questions that we have received, all the questions. Uh, maybe Hazid can share, is there any other questions from our viewers today, then I, I'll be able to answer them.
Okay, thank you for your question.
Okay, alright, there's one more question here, if they are under probation, is it applicable for maternity leave? Uh, if they fulfill their requirement, that's now I mentioned, at least they should have worked four months before their due date, be- before their confinement period. If they work for you four months, regardless they are confirmed or under probation, they should be entitled. So Employment Act is such a way, uh, designed, it doesn't discriminate between uh, probationer and confirmed staff, okay? Once they are employee, remember I mentioned contract for service, once they are employee, even though under probation, they are entitled and all whatever stated in the Employment Act shall be applicable to them. Okay, another question, how do we calculate forty five hours, if let's say working hours Monday to Friday, eight thirty to five thirty is, uh, how many hours, nine hours minus lunch? Will be eight hours, right? Okay, so eight times five, forty hours per week, uh, from Monday to Friday. Saturday is four hours, so it's forty four hours? Okay, so in forty four hours, if I'm not mistaken, I think it's forty four hours, then we can proceed with that kind of arrangement. You want to add forty five hours, then you just need to add one more hour to Saturday, become eight thirty to one thirty. Then you fulfill the forty five hours requirement. Okay, someone is asking, can you elaborate on the X new provision for flexible working arrangements? Uh, as earlier I mentioned, flexible working arrangement, uh, is best for you to have a form for them to, for the employee to fill up, to request for what kind of flexible working they want. Either work from home, okay, so you can say, okay, this level of employee, you are allowed to work from home. Better to have a briefing with them first, okay? So example, if you're in manufacturing production, you need to be at the factory to handle the product. Or you are a QC, quality control, then you need to be at the production site to check the item. So it's best to have a briefing with them to say that, okay? If you are in the production side, you can't work from home, okay? And but what are the flexible arrangement we can give to you? Maybe, uh, you work from nine to four, example, uh, five days a week, as long as you fulfill forty five hours. Maybe lunch break, you take only thirty minutes, that's possible under the act. You can give a thirty minute lunch break instead of one hour, okay, so you can, that kind of flexibility you can give. Or you can stretch it to nine hours per day. Upon mutual agreement under the Employment Act, you can stretch working hours to nine hours, that's possible. So if you put nine hours, then they can choose compressed work week. So nine times five, five days a week, they work forty five hours. Then on Saturday, if it's a working day, they don't have to come. Or you can say, okay, morning you come to work, afternoon you work from home. Or you can say this week you work from home, next week you work in the office, take turns with your colleagues. Because every day we want someone in the office, so let's say you have ten staff, five staff work in the office, five staff work at home. So these are some of the options that you can brief the employees on, okay, according to their job scope, that's now I mentioned. So let's say they are receptionists, maybe they need to answer calls in the office and and pass the calls to another colleague, then they need to be in the office, maybe the system is not available in the uh, at home, then they are not able to do that, they have to be in the office, so it depends on the job scope again. Or as HR, we know some of the calculation like payroll, we do it in the office because we have a software system where we calculate payroll, so you cannot say, oh, you work from home. You can maybe provide the system access at home, but there's no security, because that is confidential item, there's no data security at home, so you don't want to provide. So these are some of the reasons that you as an employer or HR can put into the form to say that, okay, because your job scope payroll, you need to use the system, system, we cannot provide, uh, cloud storage or anywhere else because of confidentiality, that is why you're working from the office. Okay, hope I've given you few scenarios that you can think about and implement. Okay, next question, any regulations to leave days for staff more than sixty years old and who are under yearly contract? Okay, so again, come back to Employment Act, there's no limit to age, okay? Retirement age is there sixty years, yes, but if you hire them as an employee, you need to follow whatever the Employment Act is, regardless of contract. Remember I had last, uh, last week with a shared category of employees, they could be full time, temporary, part time, contract, so in this case you're mentioning contract, they are still regarded as employee. So you need to still fulfill their leave days as per the Employment Act. Okay, any other questions? Uh, gig workers protected under the law, uh, as I mentioned, is similar to freelance worker, okay? So gig workers or freelance workers, unless they are employed as an employee, then they are protected, otherwise no. So recently, I think you heard of, uh, this A Asia, right? A Asia, they also have a branch on food delivery. So recently they announced they are taking all those, uh, workers who are doing food delivery under their company as an employee. Yes, uh, compared to other food delivery that we have, they are gig workers. But the A Asia decided to employ them as employees. So those workers under A Asia, they will be covered under the Employment Act. Those other companies, I think you know which are the companies, uh, they are not employees. Those who deliver food to you, okay, so those are not covered under this Employment Act.
Alright, I think we haven't any question anymore, so maybe you can just wrap up the session. Uh, okay, alright, thank you so much, Miss Carol, for the insightful presentation. And also thank you everyone for joining Lash Allen session today. Uh, for your information, we will be having public training, the Employment Act ninety fifty five on thirteen and fourteen of September. Also, don't forget to follow our social platform for the latest information on our program. If you have any questions regarding, uh, our program and courses, you can contact us through the contact information in the ticker below. With that, thank you and see you again, bye bye, thank you, Miss Carol.